I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chris, can we have the roll call, please? Mr. Dutzel? Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura?
Here.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donald?
Here.
Okay, if it's okay with everybody, I'll act as chairperson pro tem until we go through the elections for the new officers. Calling for nominations for the election of President of the Northwest Board for the year 2019.
I nominate Pam Dutzel to remain as President of the Board of Education.
Sorry. Do we have any other nominations?
I nominate Diane Bradley.
I second. Okay.
We've got two nominations. Which one do we hold? Okay.
Okay, that motion passed five to zero. Okay, so we're not doing where you just say the name.
Sinks in the top.
Okay, so this first vote is if you're voting for Pam Dutzel for President. And then the next vote will be if you're voting for Diane for President. Is that correct? So I need a motion, correct? Need a motion and a second? And a second, Ed?
Second.
Okay, so this vote is your voting either yes. Now take the vote for Vice President.
Hi, Joe Yoshimura. Do you hereby have my... That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States.
That's five to zero. We will now recognize recognition of Board Attorneys. We have Frost, Brown, and Todd for Construction, Dinsmore for Workers' Comp. and Financing, Vending Law for our Board of Conventions and Expulsions, and Innocent Britain. I recommend to recognize the Board Attorneys as listed.
Salute.
By side. Are there any questions? Motion passed five to zero. Attached are, we recognize the following booster support organizations as attached. Recommend the Board of Education recognize the booster support organizations as listed.
Salute. Second.
Okay, move to second. Any questions? Motion passed five to zero. The Ohio School Board Association Membership Deuts for 2019 are $7,609. We need approval of the OSBA membership dues. President recommends the approval of membership dues for the OSBA as listed.
Salute. Second.
Move to second. Any questions? Motion passed five to zero. At this time, let's see, the request of the Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other Board of Educations to obtain favorable judicial decisions. And whereas the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund has been established for this purpose. Therefore, the Board hereby resolves to participate in the OSBA LAF for calendar year 2019 and authorizes the Treasurer to pay the LAF $250. The President recommends the Board of Education approve the memberships of the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund as listed.
Salute.
Move to second. Any questions? Motion passed five to zero. Board of Education may by resolution set aside each year from the general fund a sum not exceed $2 for each child enrolled in the district for $20,000 for whichever is greater. The President recommends the Board of Education approve the Board Service Fund as listed.
Salute.
Sorry. Move to second. Are there any questions? Motion passed five to zero. Board of Education authorizes the Director for Business Operations as the Superintendent's designated to serve as the purchasing agent for the school district. The President appoints the Director of Business Operations as purchasing agent as listed.
Salute. Second.
Move to second. Are there any questions regarding the Director of Business Operations? What the Director of Business Operations is... or disinteresed or... If that's A is listed. Which Chris made? Questions? Motion passed five to zero. Board of Education authorizes the President, the Vice President, and the Treasurer to be the official signers for payment of funds for the Board of Education and further authorize the one of the three sign checks on all Board of Education accounts and that the President's signature and Treasurer's signature may be that same. The President recommends the Board of Education approve the authorization of official signatures as listed.
Salute. Second.
Move to second. Questions? Motion passed five to zero. Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to pay bills as they are presented within availability of funds and report all bills paid monthly to the Board of Education and to include bills not paid due to unavailability of funds. The President recommends the Board of Education authorize the Treasurer to pay bills as listed. Sorry. Move to second. Are there any questions regarding the Treasurer? Motion passed five to zero. Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds at the most productive interest rate and according to Board policy whenever inactive and interim funds are available. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40 percent of the district's interim funds in either of the following: commercial paper notes issued by a for-profit corporation, business trust or association, real estate investment trust, commonwealth trust, unincorporated business, or general or limited partnership which has assets exceeding $500,000.
$500 million.
The President recommends the Board of Education authorize the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds in commercial paper as listed.
Salute.
Sorry. Move to second. Questions? Motion passed five to zero. The Treasurer may issue blanket purchase orders, which are certificates for a sum not exceeding $25,000 established by this resolution of the Board against any specific line item amount over a period of time, not to exceed beyond the end of the fiscal year in which it is issued. Only one blanket purchase order certificate may be outstanding at any one particular time for any one particular line item appropriation. The Board... The President recommends the Board of Education authorize the Treasurer to issue blank certificates as listed.
Salute.
Move to second. Questions regarding blanket... Motion passed five to zero. The Board of Education, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 3313.26, waives the reading minutes from previous meetings. The President recommends the Board of Education authorize the Treasurer dispense with the reading of the minutes from previous meetings as listed.
Salute.
Second. Been moved in second. Motion passed five to zero. Per Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.85, the Board of Education must designate a representative to serve on the Hamilton County Tax and Senate Review Council. The Board of Education designates Amy Wells and/or Chris Langford. At the prerogative of the Board of Education, we designate Amy Wells and/or Chris Langford for the Hamilton County Tax and Senate Review Council for on behalf of the Northwest Local Schools Board of Education.
Salute. Second.
Move to second question. Motion passed five to zero. Per Ohio Revised Code 109.43B and 149.43E, one, a member of the Board of Education or designated must receive three hours of public records training for each term of office. The Board of Education designates Chris Langford for training on behalf of the Northwest Local Schools Board of Education for the current term of office. At the prerogative of the Board of Education, we designate Chris Langford for public records training for the current term of office on behalf of the Northwest Local Schools Board of Education.
Salute.
Second. Move to second. Questions? Motion passed five to zero. The Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as needed. Such appointments are to be presented for approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting. The President recommends the Superintendent accept the resignation of personnel as needed.
Salute.
Move to second. Any questions? Motion passed five to zero. Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent... It did.
Yes.
Okay, the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to accept the resignation of personnel as needed. Such recognitions, resignations are to be presented for approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting. The President recommends the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent to accept the resignation of personnel as needed.
Salute.
Second. Been moved in second. Questions? How would you come back to the board? Good question.
Oh, yeah.
How would you now become a board?
There are some extenuating circumstances where whatever caused the resignation may cause you to want to go back to the person more than the resignation. So, in reality, I don't think we ever have not accepted a resignation. So, good question, but I can't recall anything in the next third year. And maybe have been questioned by the public sometimes. I don't know why we didn't go after it. And just so... And we have been questioned why we haven't gone after terminations before and the amount of money that prosecutors, attorneys go after a termination when we have a resignation has been the reason 99 percent of the time. But we would always do whatever we have to do to protect our children if they went after terminations. You know, so always we can't do the approval.
Motion passed five to zero. The Board of Education appoints the Superintendent to be the final officer of all student activity programs, and he shall present these programs to the Board of Education once each year. He will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year. The President recommends the Board of Education appoint the Superintendent as the fiscal officer for student activity accounts as listed.
Salute.
Move to second question. Any... Yeah, all of the student activity.
They will make budget adjustments or request budget adjustments because they want to move from one account to the other. So it has to be approved by myself before paying you actually physically. So they make all her incentive movements. She has to make sure that it's gone through curriculum and it's gone through the other parts to make sure that it isn't.
Motion passed five to zero. The Board of Education authorizes the student activity counts to be active for fiscal year 2019 and 2020.
The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the student activity counts as listed. So this just goes that they have to be approved by you folks and establish the working account we put on record for.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Have to move. Motion passed five to zero. Her Board of Education may exercise their options to dispay the district's employee benefits plans at the Board members' expense. Recommend that the Board of Education approve the board's spending. Salute.
Second.
Been moved in second. Are there any questions? Just a comment. When it says Board members' expense, if the Board members choose to do this, they pay 100 percent of it. It's not like how the employees get a certain percentage of payroll. Motion passed five to zero. Amy Lee, we do a permanent transfer from the general fund to each athletic account to help offset transportation costs. It will be a $60,000 transfer each year. I recommend the Board of Education approve the annual transfer.
Salute.
Second. Been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the fine-to-fund transfer? Motion passed five to zero. There's a new requirement by the Ohio Revised Code 3313.11. It requires that the Board of Education accept the rewards from the rebate for your 50% cards. So look at those. For last year, we received rebates of $30,000 for our... But those credits will be rebates back. And on further rewards, we do not utilize the reward or we give a discount for the first item as a student. With that, I have to ask the Board to accept rebates.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions regarding the rebate to the board program?
I have a question from Ohio. I need your permission. Amy, with the program, if fuel consumption for vans because of gasoline, that leaves a possibility? Just out of curiosity, could be a way to use the incentive they give you on a discount price instead of paying $2, you got $1. They might have to. But the vans are at our... I just know gas more than...
Motion passed five to zero. Amy, per our recommended policies, we must record that we should make sharing to the deputy of the board in actual or pool. Ask the official to listen.
Salute.
Been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding records for hand checking? Motion passed five to zero. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, ask for a motion to adjourn this part of the meeting.
Sorry.
Motion passed five to zero. Our organizational meeting has been adjourned. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order.
Excuse me. I'll interrupt. But in the thing on Facebook, it said it was going to start at seven. And there's two ladies sitting down moving that wanted to come to the board.
This is just our tax budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. This is our tax budget. It's confusing the first meeting of the year because we have an organizational meeting, then we have a tax budget, and we have regulations. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Dutzel. Here. Mr. Yoshimura.
Here.
Mrs. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Dutzel.
Here.
So the tax budget is required by the Ohio Revised Code. And the Ohio Revised Code allows the county auditor to waive the full tax provision to a modified tax budget for school districts since we're on a fiscal year and not a calendar year. So our modified tax budget includes our five-year forecast, which pretty much is our general fund operating budget for the next five years, the debt payments and amortization schedules so that the county can tell what debt payments are due and they know how much to collect in taxes to make those debt payments, and our permanent improvement fund, which is also a tax collection. The permanent improvement fund is used for our bus repurchase schedule, our maintenance schedule, our technology replacement schedule, and then it also pays our House Bill 264 and our blended learning labs debt payments. That's what we use, that $3 million per year. So you'll actually approve our annual budget in May when we do our temporary appropriations for next year, which will then be incorporated into our five-year forecast, and you'll approve that also. So this as a budget is not necessarily approving the district's budget. It's just incorporate our five-year forecast, which we already approved in October, and then give the county the debt payments so that they know what to collect. So I'll move on to item three. Whereas this budget, the general fund operating expenses are $89,634,575. The bond retirement fund is $5,386,862. And the permanent improvement fund is $3,7,009,03. So whereas we've had the public hearing tonight and the notice went out, which made copies available since mid-December for the public and community to view, I recommend that the Board of Education approve this resolution and attach budget as listed.
Salute. Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the tax budget?
Can you tell me again, the permanent improvements section? What does that cover?
The permanent, we get about $3 million a year for permanent improvements. And that covers our bus replacement schedule, the technology replacements. There's $500,000 goes to our bus replacement schedule. $700,000 goes to our technology replacement schedule. A million dollars of it goes to pay the debt for our House Bill 264, which is an energy efficiency loan, and our blended learning labs for both high schools, the renovations that were done for that. And the other $800,000 is used in our maintenance budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion passed five to zero. At this time, I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the tax budget part.
Salute.
Second. Second, Chris? Motion passed five to zero. Tax budget hearing is adjourned. We will start our regular board meeting at 7:00.
Okay, Chris, we call the roll, please. This is Datzl, here, Mr. Yashimura.
Here.
This is Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Datzl.
Here.
Real quickly, before we get the meeting started, I just personally would like to share, I'm sure everyone in this room is familiar with what happened Friday night with Officer Dale Wood, and they are having a candlelight vigil, I believe it's at 7:00 or 7:30 tonight, and obviously, we are here. So I just, on behalf of the board, I think everybody feels the same way, we certainly want to send our support to the Colrain Township, not only the police department, the fire department, his extended family, and just know that we're thinking of them, and sending our prayers, and hoping that he recovers quickly, and certainly wish we could be there tonight to be with the rest of the community. So I just wanted to share that. At this time, we will go to a legislative update, Joe?
There is no update right now, because they're just getting back into session.
Okay. Jim, do we have a Butler Tech update?
Just that tomorrow night, we have a board meeting, it'll be our organizational meeting like we did this evening.
Okay. And we were all given?
Yeah, now, I put at your seats the student success, about the tech for December, and there's a, on the front page, there's our construction class that's over at Northwest High School, is working with legacy builders, taking those kids out, teaching them how to rehab a house, so kind of on the job, trying to park your friends with, I guess, the elder, the legacy.
You did a good job.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into reports for employee organizations. Do we have any representative from certificated and licensed employees? Anyone from classified employees? Reports from any school-related organizations? I do have three requests for community comments. I would like to say, I believe all the three of you got the, our board policy that was attached. Just to remind everybody, community communications, we are going to adhere to our board policy, which asks to limit your comments to three minutes, and that way, everybody gets the same amount of time, and if there's anything that needs to be discussed further, we will certainly have Dustin or one of our administrators will meet with you afterwards, and, you know, get more information from you, and to help with the situation. So at this time, Bonita Sargent, if you'd like to come up, and Brenda, if you want to keep time.
Thank you. I came to your office, Mr. Bowling, and left you the letter. Did you see the letter?
Came forward, it is all fine.
Oh, good, so everybody's seen the letter. I didn't want to bring that up at the last board meeting, because I wanted you to see what my own granddaughter wrote. So the bus 69 situation's not changed, not improved. I've spoke directly with Mr. Bolden. He was going to start sending the tapes from the bus to Mr. Richman, so Mr. Richman could talk to the students. My grandchildren are not going to be tattletales. I have to maneuver things out of them in a roundabout way, they're not going to say anything, but I'm seeing with my own eyes, the standing up in the bus, the throwing of the shoes, as they're coming down my street, they have to stop at the end of the street, they're getting out of their chairs, and this is what I and Dustin talked about, it's the safety issue of it, and the bullying issue of it. So I don't understand why, and I know this is none of your responsibility, why we're in January, and there's still not a permanent driver on that bus. It's still a substitute driver. So is it because the board don't have the money to give a permanent driver the job? Or is it there, you're going to say, oh, the substitutes don't want to take on a permanent job? I don't understand what the problem is, because this will be the fourth time I've reported this. I came in September, October, December, and now here, I'm back in January. So the situation's not improving. Mr. Richman is not, it's not fair to him, he's doing everything his hands are allowed to do. I think the problem is, because the poor bus driver is with new bus driver every day. So she don't know their names, she don't know to say, hey, Timmy, sit down, hey, Jimmy, don't run around. So that has to be addressed. Something has to be done. And the letter that my granddaughter wrote, I think that pretty well tells you what she's hearing on the bus. This is a kindergarten through fifth grade bus, so it's also kindergartners who get off the bus at the end of the day, that are also hearing that kind of foul language.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And the other thing was the school breakfast, when is it going to go from, it's so high concentrated in sugar and carbs, last year and all the years before, and I know it's free government, and I'm not knocking it, because it's free, but if my grandchildren are willing to pay, when are they going to institute giving a warm, more protein-oriented breakfast? See, and they're having tests this week, and that's so important for their brains, because alls they're getting is Pop-Tart cereals, and cereal. So that's something I need for you guys to talk about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is Arnica Bass is going to discuss safe access to schools, particularly sidewalks, crosswalks, too, and surrounding PRE, PRMS. And again, we're going to do the three-minute time limit, so Brenda, let us know when.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It shouldn't be very long. I have, my name's Arnica Bass, I'm a resident community. Thank you for letting me speak here. I have addressed this behind-the-scenes talking, I've been on VIP committees when we were building the schools and preparing to build the schools, I've spoken directly with the superintendent over the years. Our children were in middle school three years ago, I've, on the PTA, talked to the principal, I figured might as well need to address it directly with the board at this point. It looks like it's not being a priority. I think everyone will agree that our children's safety and protection is, should be a priority. Prior to building the new schools, I was told that we would look into adding sidewalks where Pippen meets Kemper. Children walk that path with, be it busing, I know increasing busing was supposed to be done, and to try to help that, but they didn't count for the fact, as I mentioned prior to the situation, before and after school, tip games, football games, middle school games, basketball games, events and activities for kids coming from that neighborhood, walking across the street. I live on Wincanton, crossing Wincanton from that group, there's a neighborhood there, drowsy kids coming back and forth before and after school. I figured the elementary being moved up the hill was going to add to that. I asked if crosswalks could be put in right directly going across Kemper, right there at Wincanton. No crosswalks, lighting is out, I don't know, I've been told it's the government, it's Hamilton County, it's Colrain Township. At the end of the day, it seems like a lot of runaround. I would like for the board to consider leading the charge to make this happen for our children, before someone gets deathly injured. On that corner, in the middle of the morning, as it's nighttime, as they're going to school, they're walking, thankfully, we haven't had any snow, but the snow mounds are there, so there, it's hazardous. Widening, Pippen did not help, it didn't do nothing, but we've got added traffic with the minimum of parking and everything else over at those two schools, so I figured I'd ask the board to consider that.
If you could, this is Chris McKee, he would be in charge of all of that, so he will be responding, and also not only report to you, but report back to me, and then I'll share the results with the board, whose responsibility it is for sidewalks. We did increase busing, get a measure on how many buses we did add, because we added a lot of additional buses, at a lot of additional cost, and then what it takes to get a crosswalk there, and is it safe to have a crosswalk across Kemper?
Thirty-five miles an hour up and down Kemper Road, right there, cars are considerably going.
Most of the time, 50 or more.
Yes, exactly, and I see it all the time.
And you have the blind hill.
Waving the kids on, stopping traffic, so they can try to get across the street. I have emailed, I've done Twitter, I've done everything I can to remind you, and you have talked via email a couple times, so I'd like, again, hopefully, we can make it a priority, and if we do it done this year, it's not next year for these kids.
Sounds good. One other thing, and I don't know, time kind of flies, but there was a student that was hit.
It was.
And I know we pushed and pushed, where now you can't turn right on red there.
I talked to them about that at one point. I've lived in the neighborhood for 17 years, I will tell you, going to and from Pippen on that road, it took about three years before I noticed that sign, at nighttime, you can't see it. It's in a position where, when you're turning to that lane, it's here, you can't see it, nobody's looking for that.
Right.
This was when my kids were in elementary, my son will be graduating from high school this year, so it's been that long since I've been trying to talk to the PTA to see what we can do to make it happen, add crossing guards, something.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Monica Bowles is discussing PRE various parking.
Hey, everybody, I want to try to keep this really quick, and I'm probably going to say some things that might, may be a little difficult for some people to hear, so my apologies in advance, but please, understand that it's coming from a good place, and in a very kind spirit. So I'm just going to read this real quick. Some concerns around parking at PRE. Parking remains an issue at PRE, and there is not enough parking for school events, there isn't even enough, there isn't even enough parking for a half-school event. Given that there are over 930 students and counting, we need additional parking so parents can attend events, and obviously, for the safety of our students and staff. As requested previously, pre and post-construction, parents have been vocal about the need for access, for an access road from Hamilton Avenue. This needs to happen prior to the PRE property being sold. In addition to the access road, there needs to be additional parking pads and lighting at both entrances. I've sat through many meetings over these last couple of years. I have consistently heard that the district was under budget for construction, allowing for savings which were used for other projects. It appears to me shortcuts were taken in order to allow money for additional projects other than the construction of these three schools. Some safety issues include too much glass, sidewalks, crossing guards, inadequate parking, inadequate and unsafe playground, that's really right off of a parking lot, lack of sidewalks, and several other issues that I'm not going to get into tonight. I want to remind the Board of Education and Administration that the people passed a levy funding construction of three elementary schools. The parking issue is so bad that I hit a child, I did. I don't know if any of you all understand what that's like, to carry that every night. I knew the dog, I knew the child that was hit, she ran right in front of my car. Thank God, she was not seriously injured. She's a friend of my daughter's, I know the family very well. My daughter was crying uncontrollably, and she was absolutely traumatized for that. Ironically, the meeting before that happened, I brought up parking issues. So I can also tell you that this is something that stays with me at night. We don't have time for the Board of Administration, the BOE and the Administration, to talk about fixing these things later on, or in the future, or 10 years from now, we have now. I have been bringing this stuff up since the school opened. Others have addressed this issue with sidewalks and parking during and prior to construction, something has got to be done. It was communicated that all three elementary schools would be having guidance counselors. In spite of raising concerns about this since last March, this past March in 2018, we still don't have one at PRE. There is a strong need for one. Given the large amount of students overall, the higher number of students with need, we must have someone who is a full-time, consistent counselor, who can connect with these kids and their families, and hold weekly sessions with them to address their needs. A person who is a gym teacher turned disciplinary, or dean of students, without a master's degree license and experience, is not what was promised to us. In other words, the family engagement, especially in acting as a counselor, is just not adequate. I've been told that every measure was taken to ensure that there was a search for a good candidate, however, when I asked how long the position had been posted, the response was four days. This suggests to me there was never an intention on hiring anyone from the outside for the position. Last month, we were told that the retiree would be returning, because no one currently who took her position could write grants. Therefore, that person is coming back in a part-time capacity of $70,000 a year. This was sold as a savings to the community. My concern around this is that, is my understanding that this, that there was some notice provided prior to her departure, so why didn't we try a replacement? This breakdown is actually costing the district money. That $70,000 could have been used for a much-needed guided counselor at PRE. Moreover, it was also stated that the district would be hiring a communications director based on the findings from the communications study, which I believe cost $16,000 to this district. I find this interesting, given that last year wages were reduced for janitors and secretaries in an effort to plug a $240,000 deficit. This suggests there are operational and fiscal problems with management, or planning, and bad decision-making. I want to point out that I feel this is strict.
Monica, I hate to interrupt, but we've got to, we've got to make sure that we stick with the time limit for everyone.
Okay.
So what we can do.
I understand that. I'm going to finish this, Pam, because I've sent you emails, and you don't respond. I need to have my time, you guys have allowed it in other meetings. Don't send, single me out, because you don't like what I'm saying.
I'm not singling you out, everybody gets three minutes tonight.
Messages are often inconsistent and change based on the audience.
We've got to move on.
Test scores were not good for the past few years for our district. I'm almost done. All were out of test bias, and the world does not account, all the test bias in the world does not account for that disparity with scores. I attended meetings where we are really told about other dis-
Monica will be glad to meet with you after the meeting.
No, you weren't, because you've had opportunities to do it, Pam.
I've gotten one email from you that I responded to.
You've gotten several from me for the past, yes, you have. I still have the emails.
Okay.
Okay?
Forward them to me, but we need to move on now.
Let me just say this, let me say this. I'm going to wrap it up by saying this, since I'm being rudely interrupted, okay?
We're just following policy.
I sit here and listen, I listen to you, we come here, and we listen to you all the time, talk, without our concerns being heard. I know I have, I've offered, I've offered to be there, I've offered to be solutions-driven. It falls on deaf ears. We have a child that has been hurt. Let me say this, the people that are here on this board who care, thank you for all you do for us. Thank you. Thank you for showing up, thank you for your involvement, thank you for asking questions. For those people who work here, thank you for all that you do. For those who are not here for the right reasons, if you feel like you're underpaid, join the club. I am begging people, everybody in this room, to look in the mirror, parents as well, and say, what can I do to bring about change? How can we be more solutions-oriented and driven here? I don't want to have, I don't want to hear about another parent hitting a child. I have to take that home with me every single night. I sent an email to this entire board, and nobody responded to me, except Todd. I took pictures of it. What else has to happen? I mean, does a kid have to get killed for you guys to care enough to do anything? We've been asking for an access road off of Hamilton Avenue for God knows how long. Hopefully, that can happen before PRE is sold. All right? I'm sorry, I'm frustrated. I have been to meetings, I took, you know how many weeks of vacation? Uh-uh. I took four weeks.
Excuse me, Monica.
Excuse me. I took, I took four weeks of vacation of my own personal time to be here for meetings, for here, for PTA meetings, for meetings during the day. For what? Things have got to change. You guys have to listen to us. I don't want to hear about how you used to live in PRE, and all this other stuff, or doesn't run. We need you guys to offer us solutions, please. Partner with us, there are a lot of people in the community who care. I'm one of them. And that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel items. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved, second. Been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding certified retirements and resignations? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel items, classified retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved, second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding classified retirements and resignations? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is approval of fiscal items.
The minutes for the December 10th, 2018 meeting are, were attached to your packet, and I'm recommending that we dispense with reading of and approve the minutes as listed.
So moved, second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Motion passed five to zero.
November, financial report, our all funds balance for the end of November was almost $56 million. The general fund unreserved fund balance was $35 million. The revenues for through the month of November are 45 percent. Remember, we do receive our property taxes at the beginning of each cycle, so July and August, and January and February, and our expenditures through the month of November are at 41 percent. We are through 42 percent of the year, so we're right on target as far as revenues and expenditures as projected. Our investment average rate of return was 1.94 percent with our laddered investments, and the list of monthly bills, most of them were routine bills. We had expenditures for our master facility project, there was technology- There were technology purchases, some student and financial software payments, severance payments, our workers' comp excess costs, premium payment, some music supplies were purchased, as well as athletic supplies and bus repairs. With that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the November financial reports as presented.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the financial reports for the month of November of eighteen? Motion pass five to zero.
Next, I'd like to ask the Board to accept, approve fund and appropriate grants. We need to create our O O four fund for the master facility K eight building so that we can have a place to put resources as we receive them. We do need about six million dollars to complete that project. And we received an Ohio School Safety Training Grant for about forty-six thousand dollars, so we need to accept the grant, approve, creating the fund and appropriate it to spend. And it can only be used for training, safety training. With that, I'd like to ask the Board to accept, approve and/or appropriate the grants as listed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the safety grant?
The six-
No, it's fine. Do you have a question?
The six million dollars is to be spent, is to be used for what?
No, we're six million dollars short of a K eight project for Colrain L, Colrain Middle.
So what is this short on?
As we went to build the three new elementaries, we went through O S F C and while we were doing that, we banked seventeen million dollars in an account through the state because we met O S F C guidelines in order to build a K through eight, which was the next project that would combine Colrain Middle and Colrain L, which are the two oldest buildings in our district. We are six million short of that occurring and that is why she's bringing it up for a while.
Because the state will pay a percentage of that project in addition to the seventeen million that we've already banked.
Gotcha. We're still missing six million to do that project. Gotcha. And so you're, this grant here would do-
Two different things. We just need to create a fund so that as we receive revenue resources, that we can have a place to put those funds to build up towards what we need for our budget.
The second grant is a grant that was given out to every school district in the state, the one for forty-six thousand. It can be used for, but not limited to, the support of school resource officer training, active shooter and school personnel training, all grade level type educational resources, training to identify and assist students with mental health issues and any other training related to school safety. So it's been designated what it could, you didn't really apply, you just submitted what you needed to and every district was given the amount based on how many students you have in the world. And these are exactly, when, any questions you have?
Anybody else? Motion pass five to zero.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask the Board to accept the then announced certificate. There were two payments that exceeded the purchase order over three thousand dollars, so the Board would need to approve these two payments in order for them to be processed.
So moved. It's been moved in second on the then announced certificates. Is there any question? Motion pass five to zero.
Okay, and finally, I'd like to ask the Board to accept the amended certificate of resources for approximately one hundred and sixty-one million dollars as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission. This is a response back from last month where you approved the appropriation resolution amendment and they compare that to our amended certificate to make sure that our appropriations, our budget expenditures do not exceed our revenues. And so recommend that the Board accept the, accept amended certificate of estimated resources as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the amended certificate of estimated resources?
So this is so we don't go over budget?
The county is required to review all appropriations and our estimated resources and verify that our revenue, our expenditures do not exceed our revenues.
But they do. Isn't that correct?
Not with fund balance because the estimated resources are your beginning balances plus estimated receipts for the year. So our carryover, right now, we do not exceed because we have a carryover.
Oh.
We are in operating deficit as far as receipts and expenditures, but not as resources to explain. Because of carryover fund balances.
Ah.
Question? Okay. Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is general business item. It is a resolution authorizing the sale of real property, Welch Elementary School property. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of real property known as the Welch Elementary School. The district has complied with the Ohio Revised Code as it relates to the disposal of school real estate. As the final step, the Board is authorized by Ohio Revised Code to offer the real property by private sale. Superintendent and Treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing, authorizing the sale of the property known as the Welch Elementary School together with all personal property located thereon and authorizing the President and the Treasurer to enter to in said sale contract upon compliance with all conditions precedent related thereto and the authorization to execute said sale contract and connection therewith.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the sale of the Welch property?
So the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, is there any way we can take some of that and address some of the safety concerns at the new school that's been consolidated from that property?
There's several ways we could do things. We could look at that. We are also in the process of trying to determine what to do with the Beavis property. Continuous improvement funds that we talked about at the beginning in the budget hearing could be there. I was going to address some of those things in my Superintendent's update as we go, but yes to your question.
We would have to amend the resolution. The resolution says to put it in the O O four.
Correct. Yeah. This was to go in, whatever we sold these properties was to go to help build the K through eight campus of Colrain Middle and Colrain L.
So could we in hindsight amend it or would we have to make some kind of change to it before we go along?
I, I think we need to come back with several solutions for you of where money could come from, whether it be amendments to permanent improvement funds from here. I think Chris has done some pricing of the road going down through the property, very expensive, but it's just budgeting appropriately.
Sure.
And when budgets would get done prior to the end of the school year, Chris will be giving his funds by the Treasurer's Department. He will then budget accordingly to what the projects are for the school year. And so as we start to go through our work session at our next meeting, this could be part of that as a prime example of why we want the work session and audi, audience participation, excuse me, and then find out other ways also.
Great, thank you.
Motion pass this five to zero.
Next item is general business. Resolution to accept bids for the repair of property adjacent to the baseball fields at Colrain High School. We do have a representative from Clinagers here tonight. So what has occurred in the past at Colrain High School is a sinkhole has been out and left field. We did major repairs last time and I mean a sinkhole big enough for your car to fit in, but it is alongside that bank where it is starting to erode and it's to the point where it's starting to fall into the creek. So we tried other avenues. Where else could we put a baseball field or what else could we do? We did look on campus, there's really nowhere else to do it. We did have conversations with Colrain Township. They have a park called Heritage Park. They used to have four fields or three? Four. They made one a dog walking trail. So we asked them, can we partner with you and move Colrain Baseball from the onsite campus, just redesign it because it would cost money to go down there and fix what needs to happen? And they came back with a price of two hundred and seventy-four, two hundred and seventy-five dollars a game. So just to play a varsity and a J V baseball game at Heritage Park, Colrain wanted five hundred and fifty dollars per game. There was no partnership there, so we decided not to go that way. We have been told that the parks are rarely used, that nobody is there. So we did try that connection. We're not just blindly throwing money out there. We saw an empty field. I have administrators and parents who live in that area. It was a strong suggestion from them. We went to Colrain Township, tried to bargain, I was thinking twenty-five, fifty dollars a game. With that two hundred and seventy-four dollars, we had to do all upkeep. We had to keep the grass where it is, the infield where it is, and we would have to bring in portlets if I'm not mistaken. They would supply the portlets. So we did try other avenues, so we are going to try to support this. And so if you look at several things, now, what would be the difference in going down there? Well, kids have to get to practice, so they're going to have to ride in cars to get down to that field. But it, we don't just make harsh decisions. We've had complaints throughout the year from parents who live around Colrain High School saying the band is out there practicing at all hours, especially on the weekends and it's kind of loud. And, you know, our bands, I don't know if people realize, but the music departments at these high schools put in more time than what the athletic programs do. And they are outside practicing, so there is a complaint of noise. So the only place they can practice is to practice on the football stadium field. Why? They need the lines. Those lines coordinate where they march, how they move, how they set up. They need a lined field. So we thought if we could move the baseball field to Heritage Park, we could put a pavement area over there, move the noise away from those neighbors because, you know, if they have a competition on Saturday morning and they start at nine o'clock, they're out there sometimes at seven o'clock practicing. If you go by our fields and I know in other school districts, the bands are sometimes out practicing till ten, eleven o'clock at night, it just comes down to field space time. So you have the same problem at both high schools. So we have tried several avenues, but if you have any questions for Clinagers, they are here, or Chris McKee. So we're going to accept bids because of by law, we have to because of what the cost will be. But if you have any questions about what's going on with the area or any questions, now would be the time to ask. Sorry for this tangent.
Anybody have questions? We already have the motion.
Need to do a motion now. We need to motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do accept bids for the repair of the property adjacent to the baseball field at Colrain Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is a general business item. It is vendor contracts. The Superintendent Treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Anybody have any questions regarding the vendor contracts? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is general business item. It is a donation to the Colrain Township Fire Department. The Northwest Local School District is requesting approval to dispose of bus, school bus number thirty by no day donating it to the Colrain Township Fire Department for the purpose of school bus rescue training. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the donation of the school bus thirty to the Colrain Township Fire Department for the purpose of school bus rescue training.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the donation to the Colrain Township Fire Department? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is certified licensed personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
And at this time, I'd like to turn it over. Arnie's next.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second for the certified licensed personnel. Anybody have any questions? Did you want two before we go or you want to-
It's the next one.
Pass five to zero.
The next item is classified personnel item. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed and after, before that, I'd like Darrell to introduce our new supervisor of transportation.
So Thomas, if you want to stand up. This is Thomas Gray. Thomas served in the United States Marine Corps for twenty years in the area of logistics and transportation. He completed tours in Operation Desert Storm, Desert Shield and Operation Iraqi Freedom. Thomas has earned various medals, accommodations and awards during his service in the logistics and transportation career field. After retiring from the military, he served as an operation supervisor, dispatch supervisor, recruiter in various organizations and most recently as a pupil transportation routing specialist at Cincinnati Public Schools where he was the router for approximately forty public charter and non-public schools that transported over seven thousand children on a daily basis. Thomas was awarded the Future Leader Award by the C F O P for the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year. He is married to Kathy and they have seven children and seven grandchildren. And outside of work, they spend a lot of time with their grandchildren, they bowl and they ride motorcycles. So please help me welcome Thomas and his family to our Northwest family.
I would also like to make the community aware, as the Board is already aware, that Bob Engel will be coming back in a consulting role to work alongside Thomas, hand in hand and making decisions for the district to improve our transportation, look at the routes and I'm looking forward to Thomas and Bob getting started tomorrow morning, reevaluating everything from top to bottom. No stone left unturned, making decisions together. Thomas brings in great ideals from his former position. Bob brings in the luxury of knowing the school district and every road in the district. So it'll be a great partnership. Look forward to it and we look forward to the day where we're not talking about transportation, we're putting safety things in place, we're making sure we do the right things and getting us heading in the direction. And I think these two are the people to do that and I'm very excited to have Thomas and Bob.
Welcome. I do need a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, off for the vote. Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is a miscellaneous, miscellaneous item. It is Neola board policies that have been changed. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the Neola board policies as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion pass five to zero.
And I'm not delaying, I'm just waiting for my computer to catch up, that's why. The next category is curriculum and instruction. Attached, you will find the high school program for study for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. We are presenting the program of study for information tonight, so please look it over and please let us know and Brenda and Stephanie will be glad to answer any questions you might have about that and Dustin also, who's not with us at this time. So it's for information only. Okay, I was going to be short with my community comments, but, or Superintendent's comments, but I want to address some of the items that were brought up here because they're all very good items and very important to all of us. I'll start with Mrs. Best. She has brought this up at our V I P meeting. It's not something that is a snap of the fingers and a fix. It's working with Colrain Township, it's finding out what the cost is, it's finding the legalities of what it costs for a crosswalk. There are many things behind the scenes that all I can say is we need to do a better job communicating and maybe it comes to the point where there's so many questions about business, all three things tonight were from business, is that Chris is going to have to start getting a monthly communication letter together. Or, I would like to start addressing some of these concerns at our work sessions. Because the true purpose of a work session is not to pass policy or vote on things, it is to give you information and gather feedback. So, I think one of the things we need to do here, yes, I don't want anybody walking on Pippin Road. I can sit here and tell you that we have increased the amount of kids we're busing, but that has come at a high cost also. We need to get exact numbers, see what exactly we're doing. That Kemper, you are not the first, you will not be the last, it is dangerous. They walk down that pathway into that subdivision, and they cross Kemper Road with no supervision whatsoever. So, we've got to look at, one, administrators at all our buildings, because we've heard complaints similar to this at Struble, of making sure, I think it's time to, what are we doing with crossing guards? What are we doing with individuals? Why is it not important to have somebody holding a sign there, stopping traffic as an adult? Stop ignoring some of the problems that are happening, because it's not something we want to wait and be Cincinnati Public where, you know, a kid gets hit by a car accidentally, we don't need that to happen. I'm the reason we have a stop sign at Pippin and Houston Road. I got hit by the car as an eight-year-old. So, I get it, I feel it, I know exactly what you're talking about. These have been discussions that Chris and I have had, and I can leave the room and Chris can tell you the discussions, we are looking into it. But what we've got to do is budget accordingly. We've got to take the permanent improvement plans, we've got to try to put those monies in place. Once the budget for this issue was established, it wasn't something we could change mainstream. So, we will look into that and continue to do our best. Monica, to address your concerns with the parking lot, yes, I am fully aware that parking is an issue. I want to take some of the blame for myself and the administrators, in that they haven't really followed through with what we talked. I mean, we had that, that open house at one school and the open house at the same school, and so we talked to our administrators about that. And we said, "Make sure that don't happen again." Well, the first night I come back to watch the awesome Christmas concert, there's a wrestling match at Pleasant Run Middle School. Went in one ear and out the other. That I can fix with my administrator, trust me. The other thing that we have to work on is, we tried to change the basketball games, and I'm hoping I can hear one positive, that it is working a little bit. So, we moved latchkey, or not latchkey, wise kids, so they have a separate entrance and exit on the night of boys and girls games. Because we did not want them to have access to strangers coming in our building from other SWAC schools and having access to our little ones. And they were supposed to take the bathrooms, so you could walk out of the library and you've got them right there in the hallway, so they should never mix.
Because here's the issue, if you don't like, I'm not going to leave a gap, but this is the very same issue. I think the solution to this whole thing really, honestly, is to change the time. You have wise kids until six o'clock. The easiest, the easiest thing to do for all involved is just to not have activities until after that time, and here it's hot. I understand the meaning and all of that. I have experiences myself, so I've heard from other parents that, you know, we were very frustrated. Because the kids have been moved down into the live running now, there's no, there's not like an adequate buzzer system. And if you have like, parents, you have like, a guardian that I'm thinking of today, or a spouse or whatever, people don't know where to go to get their kids anymore. And on top of that, they're walking like, all the way around instead of directly in front of where they are, like in cafeteria, which is why they're very frustrated. Not only that, there's an issue with wise kids and the lack of, this is probably on another discussion, because not a lot of supervision, there's a lot of kids with very little supervision. Understand, I know that the why, why we have staff issues. The problem with all of this is, you have people opening the door, like sometimes students are opening the doors, possibly for strangers, you know?
Well, we did talk about a buzzer system, so Chris, there is no buzzer system in?
There's no buzzer system. There's one at that end, but there's not one in the cafeteria. And the fact, and the other issue is that, let's just say, you have these kids, you've got, I don't know if kids are wise kids, a lot, probably close to 100. And you've got these parents that are used to coming to the cafeteria to pick up those kids every day, which is really the only place where they don't have to have to do things. And they're required to get so much extra, so they all have to be in the cafeteria. The problem is that, on those specified days, people don't always know what those days are, if they're like, you and I are married or whatever, and we go, we don't know which day to go. People, there's a communication.
Right, the thing that's coming, the common thing, is communication. And unfortunately, as Superintendent, I can't do it for my principals, but my principals are not making this a priority. My AD at the middle school is not making this a priority. I have to get my administrators to make it a priority, that latchkey is your problem, you need to own it, it is part of your school, those things we can affect. We've sent, I mean, I can't say I would be sending out something personally each Monday, these are the days we have things. It's all about communication, it is something I'm preaching constantly in our AO cabinet meetings, and it's something I'm preaching constantly to our principals. But again, we are failing miserably and need to do a better job. It is. It all directly reports back to me, and until I get everybody else to get us all on the same page, who is more important than our customers? Our customers is our parents, more importantly, it is our kids. We got to communicate. My point is, we can't solve all these problems tonight, but I was under the understanding, a lot of these were being addressed. And I don't know how, I mean, it's going to take personal meetings on my behalf with administrators, when I, the night I was there for the concert, it just blew my mind. I called Eric and I said, "Really? A wrestling match on the same night as a concert? We have to fix things like that." There is no excuse like that. We have to do a better job, and we will do a better job.
Is that AD at the middle school, we've set that priority on that, my kids don't want to be there?
And I can tell you, I sat and told him he doesn't.
He said that specifically to us.
Yeah, his games is what we promised the community and the games we have to do, but there is no reason we can't make the wise work for the 14 games that would be there. So, all of these things are being looked into, we will continue to look at them. I will, we have a principals' meeting Monday, so we'll make sure we cover those things. And then we continue, I was told that we had a common bus driver as a sub, as a regular on bus 69. She's saying we don't, so Chris, I need an, I need an answer for that and why that's not happening, and Thomas, if you could look for that first thing in the morning. Because I was told by Dan Bolden, I had three emails saying that they were in place. So, what I don't want is the board to get accused of things because we're not doing our job. So, we have to do a better job communicating, we have to do a better job getting where we will, and we will. That's all I can promise you. That's it for me.
Okay, at this time, it's community comments. If anybody has anything that they'd like to talk about that we discussed tonight, you don't even have to come up to the podium, you can just raise your hand and discuss it from your chair. Yes?
Three picks. You're selling the Welch property and I heard an amount of $279,000. You're talking about, or you're in the process of selling another piece of property, but I didn't hear an amount.
Beavis?
Beavis.
And Chris, do you remember the amount off the top of your head? It was basically the same price, because it's 11 and a half acres.
So, you're saying out of $550,000, you're looking, you've got that money already allocated, or you don't have that money allocated? Because first I thought you said you did the budget last year, and you can't do a blow with different this year?
The money for those two properties is to be put into the Colrain-L Colrain Middle School project. If the board would like to change that, then they have that priority, yes.
Do you have, do you say that again? I misunderstood. That, that board has to change?
This board. But, also, understand that we would make Colrain-L and Colrain Middle School parents aware of what's going on, as we do with everybody else in the district, because what I'm hearing from them is a lot of, they're not happy because new schools are out there.
They're very unhappy.
Yeah, so, it goes both ways. So, it's not something you can just snap your fingers and take money to rob Peter to pay Paul. It's something you got to work collaboratively on and present good information to these five so they can make well-informed decisions.
But what I'm saying is, when we go, when we go to make that conversation, when we work collaboratively, we, as the parents from Struble and PRE, we have to know what's the cost of the sidewalks, so we can say as parents to parents, you can come if you want to, are you going to be the one, he's going to sit at night and take the risk of not building the school and not giving the school for maybe another year or so? Why, our students are crossing in the dark, and our students are getting hit by cars. But we, like Monica said, we are your customer, like you said. We should request, we should have an input to be able to come face to face with them parents and say, "We, we get it. You're all mad because you got three new schools and you want a new school, we all get it." But we weren't part of the planning plan, like I've talked to the board before, I worked in corporate America all my life. When you have a project that large, everybody has a piece of their pie. Somebody missed the piece of the pie of the road access, the parking and the sidewalks. Not blaming the board, not blaming anybody, somebody, somebody did something and didn't do their job. So, we as the parents who now grandparents have kids going to those schools who are saying, red flag, red flag, traffic, sidewalks, you know, crosswalks, we have the right to be able to say to the parents, "We, we get it, you want a new school, we get it." But first of all, we need safety first, that's coming for your school. Not asking for the whole $550,000. We're already $6 million short, so I'm not asking for all the $550,000, but we should be able to get a piece of that pie for the sidewalks. Not, if not the road, at least the sidewalks. So, that's, that's the communication that makes me upset as a grandparent, because I've been in these board meetings now going on five or six months, this is the first time I've heard the actual money of one of those schools being sold. So, not?
This is the first board meeting we've had the actual final cost, that's why you haven't heard it. It's been the negotiations.
Okay, but did you have a ballpark figure at one time? I mean, you're saying Beavis is going to sell around?
No, because we're getting a lot of negative feedback from the Beavis areas, I've told the board. We tried to have a meeting, we had five parents show up. What we found in the Beavis area is that a lot of it is rental property, so a rental person who's owning the houses and renting them is not really involved. So, we are continuing to see what that's worth. And then you have to look at, it was pretty easy at Welch, you know where your entrance and your exit is, it's not that easy at Beavis. So, we continue to work on that. We're probably a good two to three, four months away before we even get to a bottom line there.
Okay, and then you talk about these work sessions. Who is allowed to come to the work session? Is it just the board?
Anybody, it's open to the public.
What, where, okay.
It will be right here.
What, when, when are those?
It's, if you look at the board meeting schedule, it's approved tonight, and Dustin, he's not here right now, he went to the vigil. He will put it on there, and I believe January 28th?
It is, January 20th at 6:30 here.
January 25th?
28th.
28th at 6:30, right here.
Instead of doing like, two meetings, we're going to make sure one of those meetings is a work session pretty much almost every month.
Yes.
They're pretty close to it, so that there is dialogue. And that's when we as the board get a chance to ask the questions you're asking, and, and to talk about all of this.
Who, who do you ask the questions to? The parents, or the people?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
So, the way this would work is, I will design an agenda, it will not be published anywhere of things we need to cover. As you come in this night, you'll see the agenda posted up here. A work session is a chance for a board to come, ask, seek information, be told information, and then we'll put a part of a time in there that if feedback is needed from the audience who is there, that it will be a part of it. But it is a chance for us to look at, as we've talked the last couple of meetings, we have a levy that will need to go up next November. I'll cover some of the aspects and get as much information as we can by the 28th on cost of several things that were mentioned tonight. We would probably bring in Pete Becker or, more importantly, some, yeah, we can't, we're not going to bring in the township, but we can bring in our architects who could give us a basic cost price of what things would be.
Okay, my third thing was, whoever recommended hiring Thomas, my hat's up to you, I'm a marine family, you're going to get the best work ethics out of that man that you've ever seen in your life. Any marine, I'm proud of the marine, and they ride the motorcycle besides. But whose place is he taking? You said, is he a supervisor, or what?
Dan Bolden has handed in his letter of retirement, so he will be leaving.
I mean, is he going to be in the school year, or is?
He will work through March, and then he will use his vacation days, because we don't want to pay them out as he goes, and then he will.
But, so, is the guy Fred or Frank, is there a guy that works with you named Fred or Frank?
Bob.
Bob Engle.
Bob, George.
So, he's still there?
George is here.
Mr., congratulations, but I mean, he's going to have a lot of time. So, I commend whoever interviewed him and honored him. Military is one of the best people you're ever going to get. I'm a military fan, so I have to thank him.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go.
I know, well, I want to, the rest of the thing, like, and it depends what we've already discussed, I like to say, Todd, I disagree with these people. There are parents, parents have a responsibility to show up and be involved as well. You cannot take all that responsibility, it's not worth the time. But my point, and what I was trying to convey, is that it is worth it to take a large village of all of us to come together and try to get rid of some of these issues that are occurring, and it's all of us. I'm simply saying that, for PRE, we need to get on this issue with access, where I know it was brought in the past, I don't, I'm not interested in going back to the past, but we've got major issues here, $100,000 is not a lot of money to do a project, you know, work in these places, or I get it. But we got to figure something out before we move on, because there's issues with these schools, and I don't even want to get into the way about why. But we're here now, and I feel like, to that, to Devon's point, those, those safety issues have to be addressed before we start moving on and thinking about whether the other schools. We have to, I mean, I don't, what I don't want is for, to hear about a kid on the news or the parents having negative press, or just all this sort of, you know, you don't want that as parents. I will also want to say, I know that I came across very trashy one there, you guys know I've been around for a minute now, but I do care about the community, I care about the people that work here, that, that live in our community and our students. I think our, we should absolutely pass, we have to pass a warning. So, I want to, I just, I want to make that very clear. And so, you know, I want to partner with you guys, I know there are a lot of people in this community who care and want to partner, and soon you guys, you know, you've got a spot, but how does X know about responding to you guys? You know, and, and we try, I know that there are someone else that tries to get this up, I know I've sent a couple texts messages to some folks here about some potential problems, so they don't blow up, and we're not immediate, and whatever. So, I care, I just want you guys for our community, and I just heard it all, I'm a god, but then, wake up and then there's a problem somewhere, so, you know, and that's it, that's the thing probably.
Yes.
I mentioned that, that some of these things can't be done before our rightness training. I've been talking about sidewalk and crosswalk, that, that area, if what's occurring, you know, when that training happens, we have to, and our heart steps in, in the community about, and we, and then when you and I spoke, it was important, but.
Where's the actual location of the sidewalk that you're talking about?
The one?
Right in front of the school.
When they were, I even sent a follow-up text, Twitter, emails, when they were looking to Wylie, where Pippin is and Drummond Center, the sidewalk that will connect different corners to the school, there is no, no access to the school from that side. And when they were looking to widen the road, I was like, when they're about to construction, they've got you from sidewalk to here, I would have flagged it.
You mean coming from Kemper to the school?
Coming from Kemper to where that church is on the corner, the sidewalk's in, right there, but I run that road, I live in that neighborhood. So, I walked in, right there at the church, it's a visit, I mean, it's a Kemper, and then across Kemper, down Pippin, there's like three houses, you have a house in the corner, so, you have the garden.
Yeah, I just said in the garden.
And then there's another house, and then another house, and then the school. They widen, they use the construction path there, all of that construction went on, you know, like I was.
Well, and here's. Where that garden is, were you talking about? Is there even enough room to put a sidewalk in there? Doesn't that drop off into that kind of sharp?
It does, but there's things, that's why I'm saying, if there's the answer, I don't know, there's reasons, if they do all over the city, building sidewalks into the same thing. And when they widen the roads, that they have, they really offer that, that, that.
Right, I think the important.
Those are the questions, my problem isn't so much that it's been done, it's that I haven't heard of it on the drive.
But, but a lot of key information is missing. No school district in the play, in the state, plays for sidewalks that are off school property. That is a township issue 1,000 percent. And we, we have, we've had those conversations, we've.
I've talked to council too.
Yeah, and, and that's, I have township trustees calling me and saying, "Hey, can you write a letter saying that they need sidewalks in this area so the township can pay for it?" We only pay for what goes in the front of Pleasant Run Middle School. And, and, but, the.
What do we need to do?
We, right, and Chris and I have talked relentlessly, they want, there are different things that go on with the township that you can't discuss at tonight's meeting, because there's just so many rules, regulations, and politics to it, but sidewalks, they want you to either put them in or give them $25,000 to put toward a sidewalk fund, so they can a sidewalk fund, so they can go somewhere else.
And that's that $700,000.
But we, schools don't pay for sidewalks. The township should be paying for these sidewalks.
And I talked to them, we're just, the board has trustees that talk about, okay, this is something that's important to the community. So, let's talk.
So, what's gonna need to happen is, Chris is gonna need to pull a committee together. He'll have to send out emails to the Pleasant Run and Pleasant Run Middle folks, and then he'll need to pull the township in. And it's no different than what the trustees did when they asked me to write a letter saying there's a sidewalk needed here, but they paid for it. Colrain High School didn't pay for the sidewalks. And the school district doesn't pay, no school district does. So we've gotta get with the township.
Yep, yes.
While we're on that sidewalk thing real quick, because I live on a county road, Pippin, it is not township, township sidewalk responsibility, that they told me this over and over. It is the county, because it is a county road. And when the county did the expansion of that road down by my house, they put sidewalks in where there were sidewalks, where there were sidewalks. It wasn't their job to put sidewalks in. So, if there is a problem, and we need to get to the source, because Pippin and Kemper are both county roads. So they should be the county's responsibility to tell us why they can and cannot put sidewalks in.
I can tell you, Chris and I have met with the county several times, and we've been told how insignificant, how incompetent, and how useless we are by the county.
Did you know what? Then we can actually get together and start that.
Well, because Pleasant Run was down on Rambleson, there was a sidewalk that went straight across, so they didn't worry about it.
Fanning Road is supposed to be finished right now, and I'll end it with this, and it's all being held up because of the county.
What about when you meet with how the county do it comfortably and invite them?
Oh, they won't do that. But we can get a committee together and work on it.
Anybody else?
Township, the county, the township.
Is there anyone else?
I have another one question about the baseball field. You mentioned that the township was charging $275,000?
Per game.
Okay. That's a cost to me, I mean, if you wanna rent a field, it costs about $5, $600 individually. They're paying for-
These fields are sitting vacated now, is our point.
But if you put people on it, they have something insurance on it, there's other, those kind of things that are-
We have our own insurance for our teams, as we do for all athletic events, because it covers when we play at a weight field. So, that part I don't believe, I mean, it comes down to, what does a partnership look like?
And I'll be honest, we, we try to watch what we say, but partnership is one-sided. And I think it's nice to hear this, because I think it's gonna take-
We need to go talk to them, because they can tell us that it's not one-sided.
When you go to a board meeting, they're talking out of the other side of the ground, the other side talking. And I go to every board meeting.
The trustees?
Yes, indeed. Scant them all night, just choosing that always night of year is next week. Yeah, ask and make their need real well.
I just always thought the definition of a partnership was every side working together, not just-
Everybody brings their issues to the table. You're not gonna get everything you want, and I'm not gonna get everything I want.
Oh, absolutely.
But when one side says, oh, like she's saying, they're saying, all that he knows, you gotta talk to the county. And then you go to the county and you think you're gonna get in a partnership with the county. Kinda get, oh, that's not us. This road's the state of Ohio. Because it happens, if I come out of my subdivision, it's Colrain. When I get on Galbert, it's county. When I get on, in Chesapeake, it's Colrain, Galbert is county. In Colrain Avenue, it's state. So I get in my contact, all three ground places, the ice and snow, because they all pass the buck, right? It's on my road, while me and Colrain touch, but that's county, that's county or state run. So it's gonna be the same thing. So, somebody needs to, as a teacher and educators, maybe you need to put the word collaborative or partnership up somewhere at every meeting, and maybe we need to say, this is the definition of collaborative partnership. Because we're obviously not getting it, because exactly, I go to the board meeting, and that's not what people do. The people that you're talking about, road heights and Pippin Road, and they keep passing the buck. What's not us, it's the county. What's not the county, too, they contract it with. So they just keep passing it. So it'd be interesting to be in a meeting with, as a committee, with the county and township, and watch it, watch the two sides roll.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, we'll go to board members' comments. Joe, do you have anything?
Can I ask Monica something? Monica, when's your next PTA meeting?
We're trying to work through that right now. Come to that later.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because this was one of my campaign requests, that we move the board meetings from school to school, so the parents of that area can have easy access to either meet the board members, or to, you know, express their concerns about what's happening in that area.
Yeah, well, I mean, you guys are real well, I mean, Todd came to one of our, this gaming, and I thought it was all well. You know, we've got, we've made some strides, but the parental involvement is an issue in our district. I mean, we've got a lot of parents that are involved, really do. And they really need to be here.
But if we had it at your school, would more parents attend?
We had, at our last meeting, we probably had about 50 people there plus. Yeah, they would probably show up. But we would do it in a very organized way, so it's gonna become a true complaint center.
Well, and the key is, we don't wanna take away from your PTA either, so we would have to be careful. We could move the work session there, that's not a board meeting per se, but I would make it opposite of your PTA night, unless you guys-
Okay, I mean, yeah. Whatever we can do to figure out what's going on over there.
So, for example, we made February 6th the work session, and we're gonna make January 28th the work session on the calendar that was approved, so.
So the work session, there's no January 28th anymore?
Yeah, January 28th's gonna be a work session, and then February 6th, so they originally were back-to-back, or not back-to-back, but they're gonna be now because of all the-
Todd, I've got one bubble tech program coming on the 28th, can they still come and present during the work session?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We'll probably have more people. And we'll have TV here.
Joe, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Diane?
So, the comment that I wanna make, I just, we've talked about it a lot here, I just really wanna encourage you to come to the-
Thanks, Josh.
Sorry.
Come to the work session January 28th, it's 6:30 here. These items that you're mentioning are the things that we wanna talk about and go into deep detail, and there's a couple others that we're looking to speak about. We talked a little bit about the, you know, the $6 million spending deficit, we wanna go into more detail about that at the next work session, and a couple other things. So, please come so we can actually have these one-on-one, deep dive conversations about these issues that you guys are discussing.
Mark?
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming and sharing your concerns and your comments, and just prayers out to Officer Lewis.
Yeah, I'd like to second that, with the Colrain Township officer. And welcome, Thomas, for coming. My dad was a Marine, so I know the discipline area there, but just wanna thank everybody for coming and bringing your comments, and hopefully we can get some things, you know, taken care of and move on.
A couple things. First of all, we tried tonight to adhere to board policy, because in the past, we've had some people feel like somebody gets to talk longer than someone else. So after going over the board policies, talking with surrounding school districts, we decided that's what we're gonna do. My fear has always been, that's why I've been so lenient, is to not wanna cut somebody off when you're up here and you're passionate. It's not personal, but we are gonna stay with the three minutes, and then make sure after the meeting, anybody's available to meet with anybody. And most of the time, Dustin's still here, even during the meeting, if we need, you know, something that somebody needs to get dealt with right away, we will even do that. So we'll be as flexible as we can be with all of that. A couple other things, I think it was two meetings ago, we had the, was it seven, six or seven teachers here that had been nominated for the University of Cincinnati Excellent Education Award. We're very excited to say that Erin McGee at Colrain Middle School actually won the award, and she is gonna be honored on February 12th at N.K.U. for an awards dinner and program. So, wanna congratulate all of them that were here, but an extra shout-out to Erin McGee for getting recognized for the Excellent Education Award with that. And then, lastly, it seems like a long time ago, but right before the Christmas break, the life skills class at Northwest High School had a staff luncheon that we were invited to, and I know Diana and Jim and I got a chance to go. And it's just, it's just so neat to interact with the students. Several of these kids actually were up at the Ohio School Board Association and were presenting their program, and to just watch them interact, and then, and they fixed the lunch, and they served and everything.